Okay. Hi, my name is Randy Gregg. I'm the Executive Director of the Portland Parks Foundation, and welcome to our Happy Hour with the City Council Candidates. We hope this finds you and your loved ones safe and in good health and enjoying this rather extraordinary weather. Thanks for taking some time to be with us this evening. Pour yourself a glass of something, and we'll get going here. So, one of the things that's come up is our process for winnowing the field of around thirty candidates down to eight has been somewhat controversial. It irks some folks, and so I want to talk about it a little bit to get started. We determined early on that eight candidates was really the maximum number in which we could have a coherent and informative ninety-minute discussion. And so we tracked down as many of the candidates as we could, and you'd be surprised at how hard that is with some of them. And we invited them to take a six-question test on their knowledge and viewpoints on parks. We had a jury, two Parks Board members, and two members of our board, the Portland Parks Foundation's board, and they judged the answers blindly. They didn't know anything about the candidates. We even subtracted any references within the answers that would indicate who it was. And then they graded them blindly. And we took the top eight, and the eight highest scores. And so that was a fairly simple process. Now, some people are a little upset that we only have one candidate from one of the positions. But what we, the way we sort of looked at it was, who would make the most informed Parks Commissioner? It's tough to create a process to do this. A number of political veterans warned us of the hazard and advised us that we should wait until after the primary. But we felt like we should have an informed conversation with this talented group of folks before the primary. So we appreciate there's differences of opinion, but we did our best, and so let's get started. We have a lot of candidates, obviously, and we want to keep things as close to ninety minutes as possible. So we gave everybody eight questions in advance, and their answers will be brief, kind of game show brief. If you registered for the Zoom webinar, you can chat and pose questions. And at three different junctures, we're going to poll you on how you think the candidates are doing. It'll add a little fun, a little energy to the situation. And those of you who submitted questions in advance, we will get to those at the end as time allows. So with that, is everybody ready? Okay. So our first question. If you were a Portland park, which one would you be and why? And you have sixty seconds, and we're going to start with Carmen Rubio.
Hi, thanks for the question. So if I were a Portland park, I would be Cully Park. And the reason is because this park represents communities in underserved areas that came together and pushed the system to create a park for underserved children and families in their neighborhood. And I remember working at City Hall during the time that Verde and Naya and Hacienda came together and brought communities together. And I'll never forget their perseverance and their determination in making this happen for future generations in Cully and in the community. But also how our Parks Bureau stood up to partner with an organization, a community-based organization in this way, in a new and different way, and how that would become a new model for how we do partnerships with the city and get things done. So it reminds me of the importance of public space to a community and that anything is possible when community and government work together for the good of the community.
Okay, great. Thank you. Cynthia Castro for position number two.
Thank you. The park that I associate with is Gabriel Park, and I'm a little partial because that's the park where my family go and play. But I think one reason why I like it so much is because I consider myself a generalist. And my career, the different career jobs that I've had within parks, and then even before as a public health professional, a researcher, and a college athletics coach, you know, it would take me all sixty seconds to talk about all the different amenities that are at Gabriel Park. But one thing that I love about it, too, is that it brings so many different people together because of all those different amenities. And I think that those speak to one of my strengths, which is building partnerships and collaborations. And I've been able to do that while at the city, across different, across parks itself as a former Parks and Recreation employee, as well as across city bureaus, across the city, and with nonprofits and different kinds of partners. It also reminds me of the work that I did with parks as a former, as the former director of the Charles Dron Community Center. You know, the Southwest Community Center is based on the park property. I also worked on the 2014 Parks Replacement Bond as well, and there's work that's represented there.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next up, Metro Councilor Sam Chase running for position two.
Thank you. It's like picking one of my, which child is my favorite because the park system is so amazing. Peninsula Park is one that I really cherish, and I think it's incredibly important for our community because it provides a community center, a big shared backyard, and a place that is seeing tremendous change and growth. And that community gives people the opportunity to live in a more compact urban form and access things like my children go to, after-school programs where they can play tennis and be athletic, a pool, a place to run. I go running there often. We take our family for walks there. There's a rose garden. It's got places to have picnics that I've been to many times, throwing frisbee. I mean, it's just got an amazing array of attributes for our community that really feed our entire community and help us grow. And that is important for our carbon footprint because we can grow more compactly.
Thank you, Sam. Next up, Jack Kerfoot for position two.
The leader of the leprechaun community in Portland told me to say Mills and Park, the world's smallest park. I can relate to Mills and Park because of its humble beginnings and its parks resilience. Mills and Park started out as a hole in a, or a light pole that never materialized. And the idea of the park came about by Dick Fagan, an Oregon journalist, in 1946. The park became an official city park in 1976, and the park is resilient. As the park's only tree was stolen in 2013, but magically reappeared one week later.
Thank you. Dan Ryan, position two.
Yeah, if I was a park, I would be Cathedral Park. It represents both my roots and my vision. I was attending high school in nearby Roosevelt when we all noticed the area was being cleaned up and turned into a park. And it officially became a park, actually, in May of 1980. As I was the first in my large family to set off for college, it made me feel better about my roots. I was happy that the city began to care about the land under the most beautiful bridge in the often-forgotten far north section of town. The St. John's Bridge frames the park and is a stunning gateway to Linton, Forest Park, and Solvies Island. More important to me, it's a connection between St. John's and the West Side. It's a symbol of the need to connect different communities that come together to make Portland a vibrant city. My campaign logo is a St. John's Bridge for a reason. My entire career is about bringing people to the table that usually don't sit together. And finally, Cathedral Park is a wonderful setting for performing arts. And like the parks, the arts bring people together. They get us connected. They think out of the box. Connecting and thinking out of the box is who I am.
Thanks, Dan. Lauraetta Smith. Hold on. Need to unmute.
Unmute?
There we go.
Hi, how are you, Randy? I struggled, I struggled with the park, but I landed on Unthink Park. And Unthink Park is the park that self-enhancement sits on. It's named after de Novo Unthink. He was the first African-American doctor here in Portland. And what that represents for me is a whole lot, because as a single parent, I was able to send my son to self-enhancement where he had opportunities and he was shown that life does have options. And that was one of the first projects when I was working for Senator Wyden that we got money for back before they even built the center on top of the park. It has a beautiful three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view. It has a baseball, basketball. It's just a place where community comes, and so I just love it. I would be Unthink Park.
Excellent. Position number four, Sam Adams.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to participate. I would pick the Foster Flood Play Natural Area because with Dan Saltzman, we worked very hard to get that project done that reclaimed a big swath of Johnson Creek that almost every winter would overflow and flood the neighborhood and flood Foster Road. But I also picked it because it represents to me some work that needs to happen inside the city between the natural areas that BES develops and the rest of the park system. I think we need to bring the natural areas into the Bureau of Parks so that they are one continuous offering to the public. They can be programmed together. We can go out to the public in terms of resources, and we can program them as one unit. So my local park is Alberta Park, and I'm there almost every other day with the dog.
Awesome. Commissioner Yu Daily, position number four.
Unmuted, great. Well, I have to pick Forest Park. First of all, it reminds me of the forest that I grew up in, in Sherwood on the Twalton River. I've been visiting it since I was a teenager. I slept there when I was homeless, right, in Witch's Castle. I've had many dates and adventures there, and my son has grown up visiting that park. I also identify with Forest Park because of its connection to the Columbia and Willamette River, which I've been connected to one way or another throughout my entire life. And finally, because it provides an endless sense of wonder without ever having to leave Portland city limits. I've lived here all my life. I think there's something to be said for staying put, and I'm still not done exploring the wonders of our city.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So let's pretend. I'm Mayor Ted Wheeler. I'm interviewing you to be Parks Commissioner. What are your three best arguments for why you're most qualified? Let's begin with Sam Chase.
Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. Parks are absolutely essential for all of the other components we need to have a urban growth and compact urban growth. And the key three things that I would focus on is, one, the short term. Making sure that we access every dollar we can from other sources like Metro, where we, where they just passed a four-hundred-and-seventy-five billion, sorry, million-dollar bond and levy that we can use to depave and build in green areas, in hotspots. We can bring back Willamette Cove and have Metro take over and create a natural area there with their operating support. We can build trails and create open space opportunities. Second, getting a bond measure that fully funds our capital assets and our past needs and makes sure that we are completely funding all of the areas that are underserved right now in our region. And then, three, a long-term, sustainable, ongoing funding source for our parks system that will make sure that we are operating at the level that we need to have an A-plus system.
Great. Jack Kerfoot, position number two.
Portland Parks were facing major financial problems prior to COVID-19. With the economic downturn, our parks are facing an unprecedented financial crisis. Our city's facing major cuts in all bureaus. I have extensive experience in re-energizing organizations during major economic downturns. I've spent many years into working in boardrooms for major companies, and I know how to convince major leaders from Fortune 500 companies to small businesses why it makes good financial sense to support our parks. I also know how to use our parks as a selling point to attract new businesses, like Apple, which generate, will generate more revenue for our city. I'm an entrepreneur, and I have many ideas on how to generate new revenue for our parks. My goal is to keep our parks on everyone's mind. I may put on a tree costume to get our media to recognize that our parks are facing a real financial crisis. I'll do whatever it takes to get the revenue we need to get our parks up and running in an efficient manner. Volunteers are a major resource to help maintain our parks. I think we can significantly increase the number of volunteer hours. I want the world to know about the wonders of Portland City Parks. Ted, I love our parks, and I am the commissioner that can get our parks in recreation through this financial crisis.
Thanks, Jack. Dan Ryan, position number two.
Yeah, well, first, Mayor Wheeler, it's personal for me. I learned how to swim at Grant Park, and you never forget where you learned how to swim. It's where people came together, and my deep love for my hometown really started in the parks. Second, parks, more than any other service in our city, has a public and private business model. My thirty-five-year career has been about such partnerships, leveraging private investments for the public good. Within that, I understand the nuance and that special alignment between the private foundation connected to public service, both at PSU and at PPS. I managed and survived and even thrived in that nuance. It is helpful to have a commissioner who can also guide with that nuance. My demonstrated success with achieving results for equity is also needed. We need to not, we don't need to talk more about it. We need to do action. I allow data to be my guide. I want to see the demographic breakdown within five miles of each park. Look at race, look at class, look at density. I know a lot of kids in East Portland where there's six to eight kids in a one- or two-bedroom apartment. And these are our priorities for services. Equity, to me, is operational, and you have to cut through the proclamations and advocate for those who need the service the most. I'm looking forward to being your Parks Commissioner.
Thank you, Dan. Lauraetta Smith, next.
Yes, I would, can you hear me? I would say to Mayor Wheeler that you know me. I have experience in local government. I have experience in identifying appropriation dollars on the federal level as an aide to Senator Wyden and as a county commissioner. And I would also say to him, he knows my passion when I am really into something like the Summer Jobs Program. Me and him partnered after Mayor Adams left, and we grew that poor program to make sure that we have some of the most vulnerable students in our city in that program. And he knows that I will go out and raise the visibility of a project to make sure that it's funded. And he also knows that he worked with me because I put three separate annual appropriations from Multnomah County to the city to fund Cully Park. And I had to convince my other commissioners that this was important, that this was a public health issue. And so they finally agreed. I said, we're going to put the pathways in, and we're going to put the playground equipment in. And so Mayor Wheeler knows that once I stick my teeth into something and I support it. I supported Cully Park because Nick Fish, this was the first partnership with the city that I worked on. And so I'm very proud of that park. I almost named myself after that park, Carmen. But I think that he knows my commitment and my passion and dedication.
Thank you, Lauraetta. Cynthia Castro, our last for position two.
I'm the qualified candidate because I'm the only commissioner. I would be the only commissioner who has experience working for Portland Parks and Recreation and has a deep understanding of Bureau operations. During my five-year tenure with Parks, I worked in the Director's Office with former Assistant Director Warren Jimenez. In this capacity, I led policy teams, oversaw the Bureau's strategic plan focused on more equitable service delivery, supported our internal work on the 2014 Parks Replacement Bond and more. I then transitioned to work with the Teen Services Program under Citywide Recreation to get teens off the street and engaged in pro-social activities under the supervision of caring adults in our community centers and beyond. I later became the Charles, the Director of the Charles Dron Community Center, where I supervise eight union-represented recreation professionals, over forty seasonal staff, a budget over a million dollars, and community partnerships and service to community members of all ages and income levels. I also coached an immigrant refugee, refugee girls soccer team in outer east Portland as part of the Bureau's Portland World Soccer Program. I just got word that the tournament has to be canceled this year, but I'm looking forward to next year. I've established relationships that I continue to hold today across different parks divisions with other city bureaus in the community and with other government agencies. The work of Parks is complex and touches so many different people. My relationships and strengths as a collaborator will be essential as commissioner. As an example, when I led the implementation of the expanded smoke and tobacco-free parks policy, I worked with the Parks Board, Parks Senior Management, Commissioner Amanda Fritz, the Parks Labor Management Committee, NACAC, Willamette County Health Department, and engaged Parks employees in all divisions. Parks has gone through some tremendous hardship, and I know firsthand the toll it has taken on employees and the community we serve. I will bring the stability that is thoroughly needed.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next up, Commissioner Yu Daily.
Well, what I'd really like to say to Mayor Wheeler is I happily accepted every assignment you've given to me, and now I'd like to ask for one. But what I would say is I've been effective in leading a couple of large bureaus, helping modernize and streamline them, make them more efficient, and provide better customer service, as well as helping them recover from the massive cuts that were made during the last recession. Second, as a disability advocate, I have a commitment to advancing our ADA transition and creating more opportunities for accessible fun across the entire city. And third, I will bring innovative and new opportunities from activating our waterfront, creating more car-free areas and public plazas, and helping launch the culinary corridor with the opening of the Ankeny Square Food Cart Pod, which, as you may know, has been a little delayed, given the current circumstances. But we are still hoping to see that open as soon as we lighten up on the social distancing.
Thank you. Sam Adams.
Thanks. So I'm a daily user, every other daily user of Parks across the city, thanks. At least the parks that have awfully stog areas. Parks is in crisis. At the same time, we have a shadow park system that is incredibly well-funded, at least relatively speaking. Those two need to come together in terms of the open spaces that are developed and often managed by BES and then the parks. We need to combine the notion of parks and open spaces that I think will make the recreational program stronger. I've experienced turning around a bureau that, for eight years, had declining revenue, but still was entrepreneurial in introducing, that's P-BOT, before Commissioner Yu Daily had it, and introduced entrepreneurial new revenue sources like on-street paid parking in three neighborhoods in the city. And I've been part of dozens of school ballot measures, arts funding measures. I know how to put together community groups for a cause, and the cause being dedicated funding sources for services that the people find are important. I would also say that we need to really dig into why people go to parks, why the non-users don't go to parks, and we need to figure out how to make parks more compelling, not just in a marketing sense, but in terms of the services that it provides.
Thank you. Carmen Rubio, wrapping up this question.
Thank you. I would say to the mayor, mayor, I'm a community leader who has been serving the community in Portland area for the last ten years. We serve over seventy-eight hundred people in the Portland area every year, and I've seen firsthand how Parks makes an important contribution to the health of this community and particularly our most underserved and low-income communities. Our Parks resources are a tremendous asset to this community because they are accessible to everyone, and we need to keep it that way. Second, second reason I would say is that I've had many opportunities to partner with Portland Parks and Recreation within the course of my job, and I see even more opportunities to expand this access. We have multiple programs and partnerships with parks from our teen nights at East, in East Portland, to the cultural celebrations that are around the community and different parks around the city every year. We have the Slavic Festival, Latino, Festival Latino, New Year's in the Park, World Soccer. All these events are lifelines and accessible events to so many youth and families that otherwise would not have opportunities to connect in different ways to this important resource. And then finally, I would also tell the mayor that I have a lot of experience fundraising, not only with ballot measures, but also lobbying at the state for funds locally as well and also in the philanthropic community. So I would be committed to closing our parks' funding gap and running this large organization with experience.
Thank you. Okay, to our audience, it's time for a poll. Who would you appoint as Parks Commissioner? Takes about fifteen seconds. You have to do this very quickly. Let's see, Jessica, tell me when... One more minute? Okay, we're new at this. Give us some space. Okay. Looks like we have a pretty close run between Carmen Rubio, Cynthia Castro, and Sam Adams. So thanks, everybody, for weighing in on that. Okay, so you got the job. Your bureau has a severe funding crisis. What are you going to do about it? Let's begin on the capital side. As you probably have heard, that there's about $450 million in unmet maintenance capital projects. And so how would you tackle that to begin? And let's begin with Sam Adams.
Well, like I touched on earlier, I think we need to end this confusion where the public sees massive open spaces, a lot of natural areas, reclaiming natural areas, like the Johnson Creek Flood Plain, that to them is a park and yet is a different part of the city. I think we need to clear that up. I also think that we need to dig into, as I mentioned before, consumer behavior and find out what do people actually want with their parks and be creative about it. We need to know why, again, why people who live three blocks or two blocks from a park don't go there? And do we need to be concerned about that? We need to figure out a way to make the reality of parks more compelling by innovating on Parks and Recreation themselves. I would also say that digging into the backlog, we need to look for what needs to be fixed, what do we need to decommission, and what new facilities to meet what we find out from the research should be built. This is an approach to create a compelling ask to voters to fund parks.
Thank you. Commissioner Yu Daily.
Yeah, well, the council took a pretty deep dive on this last year before Commissioner Fish left us. And of all the possible funding options, sustainable funding options, the general obligation bond option looked like the best bet. And transient lodging tax is also in the running. Those are, well, at least the general obligation bond is not as volatile as some of the other options. It is not as regressive as some of the options, other options, and isn't subject to as much compression. Parks has been a tough conversation every year I've been in office. Until we figure out how to bridge this maintenance gap, we will have to probably make some more hard decisions, especially in light of the crisis and budget shortfall we're facing now.
Carmen Rubio.
So I also recently watched that work session on the funding alternatives, and I just want to say that I really appreciate all the work that council and the Bureau has put into finding sustainable solutions. Parks has very real funding problems around the unmet capital maintenance problems and then also ongoing needs for operation and maintenance. But we have to be really thoughtful, and we consider adding any additional regressive taxes that could impact low-income communities and families. But also, we understand the real, the reality of the need, so it has to be a balanced solution. So at this point, I have a lot more to learn, but I'm very supportive of exploring a levy or bond option or wealth tax or food and beverage tax or a combination of some of these. But I'm also interested in looking at unconventional sources of new revenue. For example, I'm interested in exploring service delivery charge regulations, and if it's possible for city council to advocate at the state level for changes to expand the regulations to include things like part and maintenance to accompany any new investments on the capital side. I believe that we could probably make a compelling case for this expansion in this time.
Thank you. Jack Kerfoot.
As I mentioned earlier, Parks is facing a critical financial crisis. Just continuing to defer capital maintenance will only result in further deterioration and ultimately destruction of assets, community centers, and parks, and ultimately open the city city up to litigation for accidents from unsafe facilities. The short-sighted solution to this is to cut staff and community programs, but this is only going to result in further deterioration of the bureau's capabilities to serve our community. Passing more bonds will push out more people from, because of the ever-increasing property taxes, out of their homes and closed businesses, and businesses right now are struggling. The solution, perhaps, to monetize underutilized assets like golf courses and use the money to fund higher priority projects. Monetization doesn't necessarily mean selling the property. There are many ways to leverage an underutilized asset to meet our city's most pressing objectives.
Thank you, Jack. Dan Ryan.
Yeah, with that $450 million concern, I want to first start with the safety of our park users and the park employees as number one. I don't think the parks receive enough attention as a safety provider. Right after police and fire, our park employers are often the first to have contact with someone that's harming themselves and others at the crack of dawn many times. And just a reminder of the essential services of the parks. I also want to make sure that we're really clear about access to parks, and again, rank that on equity lens metrics. We want to make sure the case is clear to our funders on what they're spending money on, and I always like to make sure equity is a part of that case. Third is, we really need to build more new capital this time, because when you build more capital, you're also increasing your operations. I've been a development director after a capital campaign, and it's pretty rough. My point is, when we make our case to the philanthropic community, first, we have to have our ducks in the row on what we're going to focus on so that they can get behind that.
Thanks, Dan. Loretta Smith.
Thank you. In this world of crisis that we're in right now, I know that there is no question about the need to address the unfunded capital maintenance. We have a couple of things that we can do. We need to maintain and grow the parks' funding, and the first thing that I do is look at where we can look at the city's debt portfolio to figure out where projects are going to fall off, and if those projects are going to fall off within the next five years, use that and look at opportunities where we can use those funds when they're freed up. And then that way, you don't have to worry about putting out a bond measure. In that same vein, I think we need to take a look at the city's debt policy and revisit it, even if it's for a short period of time. We need to lift the self-inclosed restrictions on how much property tax secured debt can be outstanding. We can actually go up to 3%, but we're only at 0.75. And I also look at the limited tax bonds. The city's policy limits general obligation bonds to 0.75 and the limited tax bonds to 1%. So we have a lot of room to grow.
Thanks, Loretta. Cynthia Castro.
So the work session was already referenced a couple times, in which Commissioner Nick Fish and Director Long went to council to present different scenarios for the vision of parks, which I think was a really important starting place because council really needed to decide, what is it that we want to see in our parks, in our parks bureau? And I know that there's a large collaborative effort that's already been happening. Randy, thanks for your participation on that. I agreed with council's direction that the bureau needs to be bold and center equity, and I supported the fulfill scenario. And under the fulfill scenario, the bureau would be able to follow industry-best practices in capital maintenance and achieve equitable service goals. I realize that the fulfill scenario comes with a bigger price tag, but we have an opportunity that does not come along very often to set up parks for long-term sustainability. All of our community members deserve a healthy and well-maintained park system. Our employees need the stability and resources to be at their best, and greater investment could mean a more proactive approach to maintenance that will result in cost savings over time. At last check, the different funding models that were presented by the bureau are still on the table. Each comes with trade-offs. As commissioner, I will engage with the bureau and also about these options and also in consideration for our economic crisis room right now.
Thank you, Cynthia. Sam Chase.
Thank you. We have to have an A-plus park system. It's just such a central part of what we identify with as Portland, and we have to fully fund our needs. And that makes it, it's a very difficult process to go through, but it's achievable. And I think we have to look at a bond strategy as one of those very seriously. We have to make sure that it is paired also with a meaningful strategy for sustainable funding. At the same time, we're going to talk a little bit more about that later. I would make sure that we had a report on the state and the nature of our park system for the voters of Portland with a lot of accountability and transparency. I would include and involve a range of people from around Portland to be part of the process, and I would bring my experience passing and being very engaged in five regional measures, three bond measures, one of which I was a leader on, and the final one, and two levies to get operating support for our region. And if we can do it at the regional level, we can do it in Portland.
Thanks, Sam. So our next question is, what about the operations side? Is the work session that was referenced and the Sustainable Future Study that Parks has been doing, basically, to operate the system as we know it would cost twice as much money as currently allocated. Otherwise, we're looking at cuts. And so name a cut you would make, but also name some new sources of income. Let's see, who's first? Carmen Rubio.
So first, I'd say that everything that Parks and Recreation does is held in high esteem by some groups and all groups in the community, from parks to community centers, senior programs, et cetera. They're all valued and very important. But I think the important place to start in answering a question like this is that it needs to be done in consultation with the community, and this is where the value of our equity values come into play. So I would ask that we look at the data about all parks' usage, all parks' programming, facilities, disaggregate that data, and then prioritize based on that. Where are some programs? So I would look at programming and look at where are some places in programming that need to be sunsetted and/or where they could be consolidated. But if we're seeing that they're making huge equity gains in certain areas, we need to talk about those very real, important trade-offs for the community and keep them in place. We can also think about monetizing, as Jack had mentioned earlier, monetizing facilities as places for other usages in this post-COVID time. Okay, sorry, ran out of time.
Okay, position number two. Dan Ryan's up first.
Well, I'd start with looking at securing operations for those of the highest needs, again, for equity. I would use that objective and transparent formula. This is big because we rely on our parks every summer for food distribution for our children and families in poverty. Also, I think for expenses, you have to look at both people and stuff. Most people want to go towards stuff, but that doesn't get you there. So you have to be more creative at how we look at staffing. And with physical distancing being a criteria right now, some of those that are involved in those positions will have to be repurposed, and maybe they are being repurposed around the shelters right now, as I've been reading, but also they can be repurposed into a private business model. The fact is, we just, we can get it done just focusing on our materials. With COVID-19, it's important for us to really right-size our employee model, and we can do that right now with the parks. It's, again, the most public-private system that we have, and if we do that, then we'll be able to bring more philanthropic revenue into the system.
Thank you. Loretta Smith.
Thank you. I'll go, yes, I'd go back to my previous answer in regards to the capital, the capital funding. I'd go back and see, when are we going to drop off some of our debt service, and we can put that into the operations budget? Because right now, with the COVID-19, we're going to be getting all kinds of dollars from the federal government from the stimulus, and we can take some of those dollars and put them into capital maintenance. We're going to have shovel-ready projects that we're going to need to put on the ground immediately. If we do that, in addition to creating more public-private partnerships, and I don't know if you saw this thing about governments doing crowdfunding, it's this tool called Citizen View, and they do crowdfunding. And if we put it out to the community and have a conversation with the community and let them know, because at this point, we have 40% of the people who are actually in the city of Portland using our parks. So we need to let them know that this is a valuable resource that we need to continue to have at a high level.
Thank you. Cynthia.
So only one out of the five years that I worked for Parks was a stabilization budget cut year. The rest of the four years that the bureau was asked to be, was asked to cut, and that was even during a thriving economy. I've seen the anxiety of budget cuts caught, that the budget cuts have caused employees and the community members we serve, who face uncertainty year after year whether or not facilities will be closed or programs and jobs cut. For instance, I was at the Charles Jordan Community Center when our preschool program was up for cuts. I'm not interested in continued cuts for the bureau. The city really needs to prioritize our parks as an essential service. As former Parks Director Charles Jordan famously stated, "Our parks are more than just fun and games," and I think we're seeing that even more clearly right now during this crisis. We're also currently seeing nonprofits fold because of this pandemic. Parks has been partnering with nonprofits. We can't move forward alone. Those organizations need to be made whole, and we need to make sure, as a city, we're supporting them. The bureau also can look for efficiencies. The Ecological Sustainable Landscapes Program is one example. The bureau has also done great work to conserve energy and water, which translates into cost savings.
Thank you. Sam Chase.
Well, on the cuts issue, I would really focus on a process that brings people together, trusted, knowledgeable people about our park system with a heavy reliance on culturally specific communities to help lead the way. And I would make sure that that group is fully informed about the choices that we have and identifying where are areas that are already underserved, where are we getting, one thing I think government can do better, where are we getting the most bang for a buck? Where are we getting the most for the dollars that we are spending in terms of people using facilities and people using our parks? And then I would focus on, you know, what are the options? Let's leverage every dollar we can from Metro and the $475 million bond that just passed, the levy that passed that I led the efforts with my colleagues to get those passed. Let's make sure those dollars are getting spent in Portland, that we're getting our fair share of those dollars. They're not all going out to the suburbs. That is a tremendous opportunity. And then let's look at ongoing districts like Tuolton Hills, Parks and Rec, where they have an ongoing district and sustainable funding source that they don't have to go every five years and look for more revenue.
Thanks, Sam. Jack Kerfoot.
Budgets before, the first thing I did was actually do a line item review of our 2019, 2020 park budget and looked at a possible, the impact of a range of cuts from 13% quantitatively to 30%. Any cut will cripple the bureau's effectiveness, and I would propose, actually, an alternative is a carbon tax or carbon taxes. 10 cents per gallon fee on home heating fuel that would generate between $30 and $50 million per year, 10 cent gallon fee on all oil imported by rail on oil export terminals, like the Xenith Oil Terminal, that would generate $15 to $30 million, 5 cents per gallon fee on gasoline, diesel, and aviation fuel, potential $4 to $7 million per year revenue, and finally, a 3 cent per million cubic feet on all natural gas consumed in Portland. That would be $3 to $4 million. We need to recognize that we need to move away from fossil fuels, and we've got record-low prices. So the financial impact on the community will be minimal, and this will get our parks funded like they need to be. Potential impact, $50 to $90 million.
Thank you. Commissioner Udaley.
Thanks. Well, first, I want to say that any cuts to any programs, parks programs, are not to be made lightly and need to involve a lot of community input. If there's one thing I've learned in the last three years, it is that. I consider parks to be essential social infrastructure. They're critical not just to building community, but community health and overall well-being. That said, I think that I would have to take a hard look at our public golf courses. We have five of them, I believe. We invested about, or we backfilled a budget gap of $800,000 a couple of years ago, and I would need to take a close look at which ones are self-sustaining and how many people they're serving. Because when we are trying to build an equitable system and we don't have enough resources, we need to look at, look at the programs who are serving the fewest people and costing the most.
Thank you. Sam Adams.
Well, when you looked at, look at national surveys of what adults and youth want to do with their leisure time, it's filled with activities that are not provided by the current recreational programs of the city of Portland. When you look at bond measures that have passed recently related to this issue, it is definitely, as Sam Chase talked about, it is definitely about open and natural areas, which the Parks Bureau benefited from. So I think we need to bring parks, recreation, and open spaces together under one unified roof under parks. BES can contract for the services that, right now, it does some, but it can do more, that providing a diversity. And when I mention the leisure services activities, we need to dig in on what Portlanders want from their parks, recreation, and open areas. The council, I too watched the council work session, and I think that's great. I've been in a lot of those sessions over the year, but what we need is the kind of consumer behavior, consumer choice research that will help us guide a new park, new park system, at least a new recreation system.
Thank you. Excuse me. So if new revenues can't be found, or imagining there are even greater cuts, which seem quite possible given the crisis, how would you rebalance the priorities for greater equity? In other words, what cuts would you make to deliver more services to the underserved? And I think all of this, everybody would convene the community. I want to hear your opinions on where you think you could move money from one place to another. Oh, sorry, I guess I have to tell you who's going first. Loretta Smith.
Thank you. One main way that we can create more equitable access to parks and recreation facilities for communities of color and economically disadvantaged individuals is by ensuring that we are building parks and centers in communities where they live. For example, there is only one community center east of Interstate 205, and that's the East Portland Community Center. When you compare that to the 10 community centers west of Interstate 205, and the fact that many communities of color and low-income families have been displaced to neighborhoods east of 205, I think we need to prioritize free transportation to parks, look at who's been displaced in neighborhoods east of I-205, and we also need to figure out how can we better utilize our partnerships, partner with our public health system and our schools to see if we can leverage money from there, and then take a look at our fee system to see if there are ways that we can rework our usage fees to increase our operating expenses.
Thank you. Cynthia Castro.
So throughout my experience with parks and as a senior policy advisor for Commissioner Fritz, I've always centered equity, and that's what I'll continue to do as a Parks Commissioner. For me, rather than an approach of either or, we should be thinking about how can we do things differently? When I was the director of the Charles Jordan Community Center, I had an employee who worked for the facility for years and hadn't had, hadn't had a weekend off in years. And so what my staff and I did as a team was, we decided that each one of us would rotate, taking turns working on the weekend, so that this individual didn't have to sacrifice his weekends every single, every single week. And that's something that, that's an example for me of like, how can you just do things differently? Certainly, again, at the root cause of this issue is our funding model. There's a heavy reliance on our general fund, and over, like I mentioned, like even in a thriving economy, parks has been asked to take cuts, and that's to divert it to other important priorities, of course, but really, we really need to be looking at additional funding for the bureau.
Thank you. Sam Chase.
Well, again, here, I think a really critical component is to do, is I would like to bring what we've done at Metro very successfully, which is bring the stakeholders together that are community leaders, business leaders, government leaders, and culturally specific communities, and in particular, investing in the culturally specific communities with capacity dollars so that they are not just bringing a person or two to the table, or quite a bit more than that, I would hope, but that we're investing in the organizations to really be informed and evaluate the information so that when they're bringing it back, they're really bringing the voice of their community to the table, and I think that will get us a long way. We can look at some creative options. When I was Nick Fish's chief of staff and even before, looked at the golf course issue, and if we had golf course, if we could come up with a system where the golf courses were paying their property taxes, we could then dedicate those dollars back to parks, and I think that's a place where there's a significant revenue.
Thank you. Jack Kerfoot.
My question is how we fairly evaluate and communicate to everyone why some services and programs are maintained while others are not. This requires a quantitative analysis, collaboration, and highly effective communication plan. This requires a quantitative analysis, collaboration, and highly effective communication plan. As Commissioner, I would lead the development of the quantitative analysis of our parks and community centers. In the analysis, it's essential we prioritize the areas of town, of town, and have, that have a disproportionately lower percentage or lower number of green spaces, parks, and facilities. We also want to account for some areas of town that have limited access to transportation. We have to make sure that we've got a fair, equitable distribution of green space and access for people across the city and recognize that doesn't occur today. We must collaborate with communities across the town to get their input and then develop a plan which must, again, be open for public comment. Finally, we must be open and transparent in how we communicate our decisions. Quite candidly, no one is going to like cuts. But we have to be fair and open so they understand how the logic was made.
Thank you. Dan Ryan?
Andy, I had an unmute moment. Thank you for the question. In my career, I have a long history of bringing stakeholders together to really agree upon an equity lens metrics where you look at race, class, low-income, public housing density. And you stick to those decisions and you let them be transparent. And that's who we will focus on during this crisis. And they will sustain full operations for those most in need, as mentioned before, in this weighted formula. I think that the parks and areas where there's lower equity needs, we get to, there'll be fewer services coming from the public purse. And we'll need to maintain a more robust public community response with more volunteers to maintain those parks. The partnership between the Parks Foundation and the Parks Bureau is going to be paramount in making these decisions. And how that we can come together to really take care of one another and really remind everybody that every neighborhood is a part of this city and every neighborhood needs a good parks. But this shared responsibility during the shared sacrifice is going to be most important as we get through COVID-19.
Thank you. Sam Adams?
I would definitely prioritize East Portland for, and Coley and other middle or low-income neighborhoods. I like the way that Dan Ryan put it. But East Portland deserves special attention. 40% of Portland's youth live in East Portland. And yet, they have the least robust park systems. When I was mayor, we changed parks' operating funding and capital funding from what was more of a citywide, in terms of disbursement, on a citywide parata basis and focused more funding on the parks deficient places within the city. And I would build on that kind of geographic equity. We did that across the bureaus. But no bureau is more important than in parks. And no part of the city is more important than parts of North and East, Northeast and East Portland.
Thank you, Sam. Commissioner Uy Daily?
I've almost forgotten the question.
We can repeat it if you want.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. So if new revenues can't be found, or imagining there are even greater cuts, how would you rebalance the priorities for greater equity in our park system? In other words, what cuts would you make to deliver more services to the underserved?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, if we care about equity and we don't have adequate funding, we will have to make cuts. And as we know, that's a painful conversation. I would start by looking at our aspirations. Our goal for living with it is that every Portlander should live within half a mile of a park or natural area. Citywide, we've achieved that at 80%. But in East Portland, only 60% of East Portlanders live within a half a mile. Similarly, with community centers, our aspiration is that everyone would live within three miles. We've achieved that 70% citywide. But in North Portland, it's just 28%. So I would have to take a hard look at who's being served, how many people, and what the cost per person is in order to reallocate those resources across the whole city.
And Carmen Rubio?
I would agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said about that there's a real need to address the lack of access to parks in East Portland in particular. That, you know, 33% of youth in the city of Portland live east of I-205. And 59% of those youth do not have access to a playground at all. So we need to prioritize any new capacity, regardless of what our funding situation is, in this, these communities first period. And we need to look at innovative partnerships to do this that could bring those costs down. We can do this by looking at partnerships with nonprofits and local, local business communities. As a longtime organizational partner of Parks, I've seen firsthand the strides that Parks has taken to abide by the values of equity in its programming and its budgeting. And they do this through important partnerships with culturally specific organizations serving underserved communities. And this is the best value and best leverage that we can get for our money. There are places we can improve by continuing to diversify staffs to include more bilingual and bi-cultural workers and hire and promote more employees of color into leadership positions.
Thank you. Time for a poll. So, audience, who do you think would be the best manager based on these questions about the financial management of the Bureau and the system? And while we're waiting for those results, I neglected to mention that we put up all of the candidates' responses that we received for the questionnaire on our website. So you can go there. And if there's anybody you felt was left out, you can see, judge for yourself whether they should have been or not. Five seconds, you said, Jessica? Okay. Oh, radio silence. Almost there. Okay, there we go. Oh, slightly changes in standings with Cynthia Castro nosing out ahead, Sam Adams. Thanks, everybody. Excuse me. So I'm going to go off script here a little bit because we have a couple of questions that have, I think, roiled the public. One is, very simply, thumbs up, thumbs down, mountain bikes in forest park? No, no, no. Just everybody thumbs up, thumbs down, or thumbs sideways, Sam Chase? All sideways. Dan's turning slightly down. Okay. We'll do another one of those in a second. So Commissioner Nick Fish was an extremely successful fundraiser for parks, particularly for summer free-for-all, concerts and movies and programs in the parks all summer, which unfortunately had to be canceled this year. What I want you to do is name the best success you've had in raising money that would apply well to the park system. What would you do to fill those very big shoes? And first up is Commissioner Uy Daily?
Well, in my former life as a bookseller and publisher, I raised over $150,000 through very successful crowdfunding projects, which I think the city may have waded into a few years ago. But definitely, we haven't explored the full potential. I've also long felt that we should have a sliding scale membership for parks. Portlanders are generous. They love their parks. But we need to invite them to help us. I'm very nervous about increased taxes on individual households in light of what's currently on the ballot. The gas measure, gas tax measure here together, the upcoming metro regional transportation bond. We need to get creative and resourceful about fundraising.
Thank you. Sam Adams?
It starts with figuring out what people want. It also includes bringing together the parks, recreation, and open spaces within the city under parks. It includes reimagining what parks can be, staying within their mission, but especially in recreation. We haven't even begun to tap the expertise in terms of latent consumer, as they say, in this case, user choices and behavior. I've had experience with six or seven bond measures in the leadership position, both capital and operating. Was part of the leadership in the original bond, Parks Measure, the arts tax, which took six years to put together a coalition. I think park supporters have the opportunity, and I would certainly help them, as we did in Arts and Culture, to put together the kind of political groundswell that's needed to not only get non, to get a majority on city council to increase its budget and more funding, dedicated funding from the public.
Carmen Rubio?
So I'm very comfortable as a fundraiser, given my role, or I've had to become comfortable learning to fundraise in my role as a nonprofit director. And when I first started at the nonprofit that I, that I work at, we had a budget of less than $600,000. And 10 years later, we have a budget of more than $10.2 million and a staff of over 120. And we've done this work, not by myself, but we created a structure and system that supported and encouraged this growth. I'm a leader who can create a vision and knows how to motivate and encourage it to its realization. So I'm very comfortable fundraising from philanthropic sources. Also very comfortable doing advocacy for more investments from local government and state and government as well. And in personal note, Commissioner Fish was my former boss. He was a friend and a mentor. And I learned from him that if you believe in something and you have enthusiasm and a deep belief in that, and you share your passion and commitment, others will follow.
Thank you. Cynthia Castro?
When I worked in the Parks Director's Office, I was credited with raising $1 million to support the Bureau's acquisition of 80, 85 acres of the Coalwood property. I still remember finding a Post-it note that I got on my monitor from former Director Mike Abate, congratulating me and saying thank you for my work on that after we got the word. The Coalwood property was a significant acquisition because it meant the preservation of natural area, including the Columbia Slough and green space in the parks deficient neighborhood of Coley, which yields many health and environmental benefits. With the recent opening of the Coley Park on the other side of Columbia Boulevard, there's a nice green belt that cuts through the industrial and commercial lands. As someone who worked closely with Parks Development Team, I know an important part of fundraising and something that I'm very good at is stewarding relationships. I've often said, I've also often said that the Bureau needs to do a better job of telling the story of our value. And that's something that I will do. You can count on me to be a fierce advocate for parks and be a hands-on commissioner when it comes to fundraising.
Thank you. Sam Chase?
Well, I thank you for this question and referencing Nick Fish. I also want to add, Carmen and I worked at the, for the same, at the same time when Nick had, for the first time, Parks and Rec and were able to be a part of that free-for-all program and really learned so much from him about public-private partnerships and how to work with communities. But the area I think I really will bring the most expertise is around the five bonds and levies that I've helped pass at Metro, two as a community activist, and three as a Metro counselor. And it really takes a tremendous amount of work getting on the phone. First, making sure you have the package right and getting the right folks to the table to make sure you have the package right. And then, and then really spending the time going out to the community, working with the community, getting the resources, and, and doing the hard work that it takes day to day to get on the phone and ask people for support and get it passed.
Thank you. Jack Kerfoot?
To this slightly differently, it's a turnaround. I was asked to take over a major gas plant operation, which had lost $500,000 the previous year. I was told all I had was a year to basically look for ways to sell assets and develop to dispose of this operation. It was perceived to be the worst performing business in DuPont worldwide. National gas, natural gas prices have fallen from $2 a standard cubic feet. Morale and job performance was, had tanked due to consistent layoffs. One year later, gas prices had fallen further to 25 cents. But we actually generated a quarter of a million dollar profit. We were the only operation in the entire Gulf Coast, from Texas to Florida, that, that had actually turned a profit. What did we do? Well, openly discussed the factors that were hurting our business and explained that my goal was to save jobs. I encouraged innovation and creativity. We celebrated successes, coached compassionately to improve performance. And we had zero layoffs. Experienced leaders are, must be excellent communicators and can help organizations to overcome daunting financial barriers.
Thank you. Dan Ryan?
Yeah, well, my entire career has been about building public and private partnerships and leveraging philanthropic investments for over 35 years. As the Director of Development at PSU in the early aughts, when we embarked on our first capital campaign, which raised 200 million in this community. I had to keep dancers on the stage at OBD during the scrappy time of the Great Recession. And I knew how to make the ask that one day and make payroll the next. At All Hands Raise, we had a $2 million operations budget. 91% of that came from private resources because we were doing cutting-edge systems work. You need to be agile with your private partners. Private investments demand accountability and results. I have a decent trust bank built with the local and some national philanthropic leaders. I know how to steward these relationships. It's a really steep learning curve, and I know I can hit that on day one.
Thank you. Loretta Smith?
I work with Commissioner Fish on our library district funding because I think what we're going to need to do for the parks, we're going to ultimately need to put together a parks district. And it's going to require us to put together coalitions of private sector, public sector, coalitions of grassroots folks to make sure that we're hitting everyone who knows the importance of, of our parks. When I travel, there are two things that I hear the most about in regards to Portland. It's the sustainability, their parks, and their libraries. So I think we do have the political will, and I think that that is something that we're going to have to do. And I think we're going to have to go back to what I said earlier, too. I want to look at an opportunity to look at citizen investor, to do crowdfunding so that we can see, what would that look like for Portland? Especially since we have so many tech and software companies here in the Portland area. It would be really good to see what it could do if we actually tried it.
Thank you, Loretta. And for our last, oh, no, sorry, not our last prepared question, next to the last one. How might the role of parks change in the post-COVID era? You have 60 seconds, and we'll begin with Carmen Rubio.
So this health crisis has put spotlight on the precarious financial situation that we, that parks is in. And right now, we know that, you know, parks is losing revenue from the closure of community centers and programs. And additionally, the general fund is also losing money. But an important thing that, that I've observed in the city's response to COVID is how, how central parks have become for mental health. Parks and open spaces are providing an opportunity for us to go outside, get exercise, breathe in the fresh air, and mentally and physically recharge. So I think that's an important component that we're going to need to preserve going forward. And at the same time, some parks facilities obviously have been repurposed to serve the houseless community and provide a safe alternative to living on the streets. And others are serving as emergency command centers. And I think this is the direction that we're going to need to go for the next while. How do we find ways to partner with nonprofits to monetize use of space and also with private sector? How do our programs and new projects build more private support? I think this is going to be the new avenue to explore for long-term sustainability.
Thank you. Sam Chase?
Thank you. I think it's been incredible showing with parks in terms of its value during this pandemic. And both for the shelter and the respite for people in our communities and the way that parks have stepped up and really found ways to have people in our park system and staying socially distant. So I think we take that value, that, that added recognized value and the very challenging times we're going to have in the budget in the next couple of years, and use that to really build the case to sustain long-term our funding and our park system to, again, to build a system like Tuolton Hills, Park and Rec, where we have a sustained funding source long-term. We're going to need to go to legislature and push to get their support and then put a sustainable funding strategy in place long-term. and then put a sustainable funding strategy in place long-term.
Thank you. Jack Kerfoot.
I think it's important to recognize the COVID-19 pandemic, that our economy may not recover at the 2019 levels for another three, potentially five years. Once that occurs, I think the first question is how do we help all Portlanders to overcome any fear or apprehension of the COVID-19, even when the social distancing policies begin to be lifted? We want people to return to the green spaces, parks and facilities. It's essential we regain our valuable park volunteers. The volunteers donate approximately 450,000 hours a year of their time, which is worth between $5 and $6 million. Long-term, how do we get Portlanders' magnificent parks and facilities to replant in our minds? We want everyone to think about our parks continuously. Post-pandemic, everyone will want to return to their busy lives, but I want them to constantly be thinking about and enjoying our parks 24/7, even in those rainy, cold winter days that we have.
Thanks, Dan Ryan.
Yeah, well, first of all, parks will change and nothing will be the same with, after post-COVID-19. My tolerance to accept complex science and adapt and survive is, is personal for me. I've had HIV since the early eighties. I've been digesting science and complexity and translating it to the common brain mind for years. And all public officials are being asked to do this with calm confidence at this time. One thing we know is that fresh air and open space, trees, they're all really necessary. It's our sanctuary at this time, and we'll need to stay connected. And this craving will be even higher on the other side. Parks will be that place, and Portland is about parks. It's our strength, and you never dismantle your strengths, you improve upon them. The public-private partnership model will accelerate, and some of our services will move differently. And some will even come off the payroll. If this lands better for those receiving our services, so be it. I look forward to bringing us into that future, and our parks will always be the sanctuary for our residents.
Thanks, Dan. Loretta Smith.
Thank you. We had a questionnaire that said about 40% of the people use our park system. I think post-COVID-19 that we're going to find, they're going to be, that's, that's probably going to be closer to 50, 60%. Because actually, the only thing that we can do right now, we can't, in this social distancing era, is, is go to the park and exercise. I think we can use some of our recreational facilities as homeless shelters, public health quarantines, green space for exercise, partner with the school districts. We may need to use some of our parks for mobile teaching classrooms. I know that today, parks are more important today than they were yesterday. And we're really going to have to make sure that we keep our parks up and that we don't eliminate any jobs as a result of it because we need everybody working to keep, to keep and maintain our parks at a level that's going to be able to accept a lot more people using it.
Thank you. Cynthia Castro.
So we're living through something that we've never seen before. But what this crisis has done has elevated the importance of parks and the even greater need for equitable access to parks for all Portlanders across the city. For example, east of the river, there is less tree canopy than Los Angeles, which is hard to imagine, thinking, given that we live in Portland and pride ourselves on our natural areas. This means hotter temperatures, which are continuing to rise due to our climate crisis and poor air quality. For our communities of color, this, this has put them at greater risk of contracting the coronavirus. Our parks and recreation system is also important to our economy. People are attracted to Portland because of our gold, gold medal parks and recreation system. So it'll be critical in helping us rebuild our economy. As Loretta mentioned, our community centers have been at the forefront of helping to deal with different types of crises. When I was the Director of the Charles Stone Community Center, we hosted a warming shelter during a severe winter storm. And again, the Charles Stone Community Center is stepping up to, to provide more shelter capacity during this time. So I think for us, a more resilient Portland includes our parks and recreation system.
Thank you. Sam Adams. How might the role of parks change?
Yeah, I think we need to study what, like I mentioned before, what people want from their parks. And not just in meetings and City Hall, but the kind of outreach and public opinion research that goes to those that have been historically shut out. Not every park has the kinds of facilities, for example, that allows for exercising other than walking around. I happen to intuitively think, as Carmen talked about, maybe Loretta as well, Cynthia, that we can lean into the health mission, both psychological and physical health. I would, I think there are great opportunities, not only with nonprofits, but with Norman County as, as well. It's, when we designed Sunday Parkway, we purposely wanted to get more people to see their local parks and to see their parks around the city that they've never been to. So that's why it really went from park to park. Finally, I just want to thank the workers at parks who have been in impossible situations to try to keep this system going. The unimaginable additional stress of COVID. They deserve our, our thanks, and, and it's, we got a lot of work to do for them and others.
Thanks. And Commissioner U. Daly.
I mean, I'm interested in how parks can change during COVID as far as repurposing existing facilities to provide anything from shelter to hygiene access, to medical aid for people experiencing homelessness. Our parks, gardens and green spaces provide critical access to nature, which is more important than ever and essential to our health and well-being, especially for kids who must be bouncing off the walls at this point, their families and anyone who is truly isolated during this time. The science, current science shows that the benefits far outweigh the risk as long as everyone is maintaining the safe social distancing of six feet and wearing face coverings. And I just wanted to mention an incredible photo that I saw of a protest of Israelis protesting their government while maintaining hundreds, possibly thousands, while maintaining safe social distancing. It gives me hope that we could bring back beloved traditions like Sunday Parkway's or movies in the parks, even this summer, if we can guarantee that social distancing.
Thank you. So our last question of our prepared questions. So imagine you've been Parks Commissioner for two years. What are your three proudest accomplishments? So this is really about vision. What's your vision for the park system and how, what do you imagine those first accomplishments might be? Position number two, Jack Kerfoot.
First, the number of park visitors and park volunteer hours have each increased by over 20% from 2019 levels. No employee layoffs, high bureau morale, and people want to work for the Parks Department. Carbon assessment fees and marketing campaigns are generating over $100 million a year in revenue for our bureau. And this has resulted in refurbishment and reopening of park facilities that were closed in 2019 and 2019, like Columbia Pool and Sowaway Community Center, expansion of community garden programs in North and East Portland, and reduction of 50% of the current unmet capital magnates requirements.
Thank you. Dan Ryan.
Yeah, I would thank you, first of all, Randy and the Parks Foundation and all of you at the Parks Department for your adaptability at this time. I would say I will be known for my equity work. I will operationalize it. It will be part of just doing business as usual going forward, and we will make decisions based on transparent data that's weighted properly. I will also be known with acceleration of the public-private partnerships. And I really do know about that nuance, that nuance and that creative tension that takes place when you have a public body and you also have a private foundation. I've experienced that. I've experienced that at Portland State and also at PPS. This is a structure that cements the public-private partnership, and it really helps when you have an elected official that understands that nuance. And I look forward to being helpful to all of you with that. I will also be known for raising record amounts of private funds for this wonderful investment of our city. I went running this morning at Peninsula Park, and it's near my home. And I ran into three people that I really care about. And I mention that because even though we were 10 feet apart and a couple of us did those, you know, dopey virtual hugs, it just felt so good to be connecting with somebody this morning. The parks are providing that for me and many other people. And the truth is, in general, the city wasn't a crisis before COVID-19 with houselessness, with housing, and also with transportation. And as we move to a functional form of government that focuses on our top priorities, we must also, as a team, come together and focus on those things that will, that do bring us together and really about the culture of Portland, and that would be, to me, parks and the arts. My name's Dan Ryan. This is my hometown, and I'm so ready to serve all of you in City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan. Loretta Smith.
I like to be known as the Commissioner that increased community usership equity, increased partnerships with business and tourism, and also cultivated and grew the budget for the Parks Department through private investment. I think our park system is a, is a community treasure, and that means we need to have the entire community engaged in maintaining and growing it. Private citizens enjoy the amenities and improved neighborhood quality that, that parks provide. And also, the business community benefits from tourism or park system generates an improved neighborhood quality that often include their businesses. So we need both groups to come in, in a bigger way and more consistently for the present and, and for the future of the park system. I believe that we should be cultivating investments in parks similar to those investments private citizens, businesses make into the arts, research and into libraries. I believe that the Portland Parks Foundation is already charting a really strong path forward in that regard. But I hope to have the opportunity to help enthusiastically carry that work forward as the next park commissioner.
Thank you, Loretta. Cynthia Castro.
In two years, success to me means a more sustainably funded park system. I know that there are already really smart people and engaged parks enthusiasts who are helping in this journey, and I look forward to working alongside them. I also envision a city that is on its way to economic recovery, outpacing other major metropolitan cities. And I'm going to speak more broadly. I had confidence that we Portlanders would rise to the challenge during this pandemic, and we have. I've, I have friends sewing masks. We have businesses shifting their production from beer to hand sanitizer and people signing up in droves to volunteer. And of course, we have Portlanders working on the front lines to keep us safe and healthy. Grocery store employees, janitors, postal workers, nurses, doctors, you are heroes. And of, and of course, our parks maintenance staff. I knew we would step up because I've seen it before. During the severe winter storm of 2017, we hosted a warming shelter at the Charles Stone Community Center. We partnered with the Joint Office on Homeless Services, our park rangers and mental health and behavioral specialists. Community members volunteered on-site and brought clothing, pet food and blankets. As City Commissioner, I will lift up our strengths as a community as we rebuild our lives. We are stronger together, and we each have something to bring to the table. Unfortunately, the coronavirus has also highlighted the racial and socioeconomic disparities in this country. We are seeing worse Latinx employment outcomes, more severe health impacts on Black and Native communities, immigrants and refugees facing language barriers, and people with disabilities being denied services. As a city, we must, with greater intentionality and urgency, address the systems and structures that have perpetuated these disparities, and that includes within parks and recreation. This is a priority for me. I'm vying to compete, complete the term of Commissioner Nick Fish. I will build on his work to secure a long-term financial model for Portland Parks and Recreation. As a respected former Parks employee and City Hall staffer, I'm uniquely qualified. We've seen the power of parks during this crisis. Let's ensure its long-term viability for generations to come. Visit my website at CynthiaCastro.com or follow me on Twitter at CynthiaForPDX. Ballots are arriving the last week in April. Vote for me. I'm a qualified, connected and transparent leader who loves our parks and is ready to get to work on day one.
Thanks, Cynthia. Sam Chase.
Thank you. I, I think I'll be known as somebody who really insisted on bringing our community together to truly solve our parks and recreation challenges long-term. Whether I get parks or not, that is going to be a role that I will take on and leveraging and bringing federal stimulus dollars to our park system, bringing our metro resources to the park system, leveraging private entities and support to our park system, really bringing forward a bond proposal, a long-term, sustainable funding strategy. But look, I, I am deeply committed as well to, you know, I lost, as a teenager, I lost my father to drug addiction and mental illness, and I'm deeply committed to solving our housing crisis and homelessness. I am deeply committed to making sure that we stimulate our, and get out of this COVID pandemic economic crisis as quickly as possible and address our public health. That will not be at the expense of our parks and recreation system. We will, I, I will be known as somebody who insisted that we can take care of all of those priorities, and, and that's the way we need to really approach this. Again, I, I am Sam Chase, and my website is samchaseforportland.com. And I hope you'll go online and learn a little bit more about my priorities.
Thanks, Sam. Commissioner U. Daly.
Thank you. Well, of course, there is the hard and essential work of finding permanent, sustainable funding streams for our park system. There's no getting around that. Second would be assessing the entire system through an equity lens and making sure that we are reaching our aspirational goals and delivering green spaces and parks facilities across the city, especially in East Portland and North Portland. But finally, I, there's a lot of fun to have with our park system. My travels around the country and abroad, I've, have to admit, although we do have a stellar system, I've been a little jealous of the ways other cities activate their parks and include commerce and arts and culture. So I'm very excited about that possibility as well. My name's Chloe Daly. I'm running for reelection for position number four, and you can check out my platform at votechloe.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Adams.
Well, working with Parks Foundation, and thanks for hosting this, to build a citywide diverse political force that makes it possible for the City Council to prioritize parks as an essential service that it is, to not wait for a ballot measure. But also, that political force can set up the success of that ballot measure. I'm two years to have a, done our research and our homework. What do people want? How do we provide equity? How do we provide recreational services that diverse communities, people of color, actually find valuable? And a neighborhood, a park-by-park and neighborhood-by-neighborhood strategy to activate the parks, which also helps with funding. And finally, to get rid of this sort of two-park system in the city of Portland and merge the open space work in BES with Parks Bureau, with Parks Bureau in the lead. So we have Parks Recreation, Open Spaces under one roof, diversifying and strengthening the parks along the way and going out to the voters with a more coherent, comprehensive, and I think effective pitch.
Thank you, Sam. Carmen Rubio.
So I will be known as a Parks Commissioner that people can trust to make sure that our city government and our Parks Bureau works for everyday Portlanders. And we're working families and vulnerable community voices have a say in what's important and also in the decisions that impact them. And I'll also work very hard on inclusive parks policies and decisions that are representative of the needs of all, all Portlanders and especially our most underserved. My proudest accomplishments will be to create a thriving and financially sustainable parks and recreation with a strong external fundraising partnership capacity, room for new projects, for preservation, maintenance of parks and recreation facilities and programs for generations to come. Also, building a track record of equitable and sustainable investments in park development, income-accessible programming in areas beyond downtown and Central East Side, and parity in parks access for East Portland. And finally, a diversified Parks Bureau that looks like our community and feels valued for their work. This will include more bilingual and multilingual workers and leaders of color in all positions, especially in leadership. I have a strong record of getting things done, and I will do the same in City Hall. I can hit the ground running, and in this certain time, we don't have time to lose. If elected, I will be the first Latinx to ever be elected to Portland City Council. So I invite you to help me make history, and I hope to earn your support. And please vote Carmen Rubio for Portland by May 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have our final poll. Who are you going to vote for? Very simple question. I'll put it out there, and while we're waiting for those results, I'll put for, I'm going to combine the two most asked questions that I've seen in our. that I've seen in our registration and what I've been seeing coming over the transom, which is, would you keep Columbia Pool open regardless of whether or not a new, Charles Jordan Center is expanded for aquatics? That's one question. And the second question is, why or why not? Let me rephrase that. Are you in favor of a Parks District? And why or why not? And we'll give you a minute to digest those two questions and a minute to respond after our poll results come in. Five seconds. I need to become better at ad-libbing through these things. Okay, it's digesting. There it is. Cynthia Castro takes a more commanding lead, followed by Carmen Rubio. So you have a chance to pander if you want, because lots of people want Parks District and lots of people want Columbia Pool. But let's get to the nitty-gritty. I mean, they're both very hard decisions. There's good reasons for, on either side, and so I want to hear from you. And let's see, we'll go back to the previous rotation. Well, we'll start. I'll just grab one. Commissioner Udaley first?
So Columbia Pool. I'm still grappling with the fact that just a few weeks ago, we had largely, we had consensus on the budget, and we were going to be able to keep Columbia Pool open. It would be my goal to keep the pool open at least until the aquatic center is built at Charles Jordan. And again, you know, we would have to look at the equity issues, the cost of maintaining an aging facility in order to determine whether we could keep it open permanently or not. Most of the advocates I talked to would, were asking for that bridge, that it just be kept open until the new facility was built. I'm sure there's different feelings out there because people are very attached. I was initially really excited about the prospect of a Parks District. And, but it's my understanding, if we establish a district, then the parks are no longer overseen or owned, so to speak, by the city. And that seemed somewhat problematic. I think there were also issues, other issues, like volatility and compression. I have to admit, I cannot dig those up from memory on command. But it seemed like a great option, but it didn't end up making it anywhere near the top of the list.
Sam Adams?
I definitely absolutely believe that Columbia Pool should be kept open as a minimum, as a bridge. And I think that it's possible to do some cost-effective, potential outdoor recreational water features within the pool basin. There's a lot of new engineering to reuse pools. Someone who was pushed for skateboard parks back in 2005 and funded, I think we funded three of them. I think there are other recreational, both wet and non-wet-like skateboard parks we could look at. I think the point is dedicated funding. As the Commissioner pointed out, there are pros and cons to a district. But the notion of having dedicated, ongoing, secure funding for parks is the goal. Through whatever means, makes the most sense for the mission of parks and also for what the electorate would find most acceptable to vote yes. We have to get to fifty percent plus one vote.
Thank you. Carmen Rubio?
Regarding Columbia Pool, yes, I am very supportive of keeping it open, primarily for equity and access regions. We should be prioritizing underserved area, and this is one facility that squarely meets that goal. For the, regarding the Parks District, for the same reasons that Commissioner Udaley outlined, I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of compression as well. But it seems like there are compelling reasons to keep city parks at this time in the, within the jurisdiction of the city.
Thank you. Cynthia Castro?
So I definitely support keeping Columbia Pool open until another option is available. I am interested in Charles Jordan Community Center as the next indoor aquatic facility site. Or until Columbia Pool is just such a disarray that it just needs to be closed because it's really unsafe for people to visit it. When I was at the Charles Jordan Community Center, you know, we partnered with the Rosa Parks Elementary School, and they would go to Columbia Pool for swim lessons. Our teen services would take individuals and our camps would take youth to Columbia Pool. For myself, you know, and in talking to older individuals, it was also provided a great opportunity for, you know, non-weight-bearing type activities. So there's so many benefits, and it's really important to keep that continued, uninterrupted aquatic facility in North Portland. As far as the Parks District, I know that there's a very passionate coalition that's very interested in Parks District. I think one of my concerns would be the loss of general fund. I think that during that work session, Commissioner Fritz mentioned that when the library districts came on, that it resulted in nine million dollars in loss of general fund, which was about a twenty-five percent cut that bureaus had to take. So everything is on the table, as I mentioned. But I definitely have some more to learn about park districts as well.
Thank you. Sam Chase?
Really enjoy pools. I think I've been to all of the pools, if not most of the Portland Parks pools. And we have, you know, I have four kids, so in a blended family. And we enjoy the pool. We, you know, it's great for family. It helps the parents. It helps the kids learn to swim. And everybody deserves the opportunity to go to a pool. And, you know, North Portland, we can't leave North Portland behind. So I'm a big advocate for keeping the pool going. And that's in part why I'm willing to sort of step up and say, we need to really take a hard look at a long-term, sustainable funding district. And the compression issues are very, you've got to be careful with those because those are ones that we have to look at the long-term picture on that and make sure we're really processing and understanding the information carefully. Because it can also be a tool to keep things off the ballot that are absolutely important priorities.
Thank you. Jack?
Earlier about a quantitative approach to make assessments. Again, we're going to have to realize that the city will be faced with cuts in bureaus. The general fund is already going to be curtailed by over a hundred million from the latest reports I've read. But if you look at the Columbia Pool, one of the things you first recognize, it meets all the criteria for being a key asset. One, the area it is located in with the community it serves. And the other factor is, if we actually look at how our parks and recreation facilities are used, we have obviously a very large drop-off in the number of people in our parks in the rainy-wet season. We don't see that in Columbia Park. It is an asset. It is a very valuable asset that's used seven days a week, twenty, well, twenty-four hours a day, effectively, if they keep it open. But regardless of the weather, high utilization, underrepresented area, and very limited green space. So it should be very high. As far as the Parks District, my biggest concern is how we bring our different bureaus together to work effectively and not work in isolation. I fear the district would create more isolation and lack of interaction between other bureaus.
Thank you. Dan Ryan?
Yeah, I am really crystal clear on the Columbia Park one. I am the only candidate in all the races who resides in North Portland. And I also went to Roosevelt High School, and that's where the Roosevelt Swim Team practices and has their meet. So the big, let's keep that open for the long term. And on the Parks Districts, I will always be honest with the voters and say, I would want to study that more. My, what the knowledge I have of it right now, I would agree with Jack that I think it's not important to add more complications and bureaucracy at this time. But at the moment, I would say that, yeah, so let's not do that. But I would want to study it very thoroughly. And at this moment in time, I don't have all the information. And I will always be that person that does my homework before I answer a question. But go riders and keep that pool open until we have a better alternative for North Portlanders. Thanks.
Thank you. Loretta Smith?
It's a factor of whether it's either or. I think we need to maintain it and keep it open. I don't have to study it. I know that it's important to be open, and I've lived in North Portland all of my adult life. And I think that families and generations of families have gone to Columbia Pool and the park. And so for me, I would support keeping Columbia Pool open to the bridge and beyond. We know that a new aquatic center can be built with the new bond money. But we need, just because we need to figure out how to manage and how to get resources to rehab it, doesn't mean that we need to put it away. It's just like seniors in our community. You just don't put folks away because they've gotten older. You need to figure out ways to fix it. And I do support a Portland Parks District.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate you taking the time on this beautiful spring, still spring, seems like summer evening. I want to thank everybody who registered and especially those who chipped in. We always can use your support. Go to our website, portlandpf.org. We have several initiatives underway, including one to help feed the families of some school students. So take a look at that. The school districts continue to serve breakfast and lunches, but the families have been really hit hard by the unemployment of the crisis. And so we've been rallying folks to help us fund food boxes to those families. And we've been doing a really good job. We've raised about twenty, or eighteen thousand dollars thus far for that effort. So keep it going. And meantime, good luck to you all, candidates. Thank you for participating in this long process of tests and everything. So really appreciate your time and best of luck. Take care.